English?
This is the English channel. Can you hear me on the English channel? Do you want Spanish now? Okay. Good afternoon to everyone. I call to order hearing number 29 of the 188th regular session of the Inter-American Commission on Human Rights, entitled Legislative Basis for the Rights of Indigenous and Tribal Persons in Suriname. This hearing was requested by the Association of Indigenous Village Leaders of Suriname. CAMPOS, Collaboration of Tribal Peoples in Suriname, and International Indigenous Peoples' Rights. My name is Esmeralda Orosemena de Troitino, first Vice President of the Commission on Human Rights, the Inter-American Commission, and I am responsible as the Rapporteur for the rights of indigenous people and the Rapporteurship for the rights of children and adolescents. So here with me today is Commissioner Carlos Bernal, and he is in charge of the Rapporteurship for people with disabilities. And here with me as well is the Special Rapporteur for the Freedom of Expression, Pedro Vaca, and the Executive Secretary of the IACHR, Tania Reniham. I'd like to begin with a special greeting and a deep sense of gratitude to the organizations from civil society that request... from civil society that requested this hearing and thanking them for being here. As well, I would also like to greet the State of Suriname and also grateful for them being here. I would like to explain the methodology we'll use to have this hearing and the distribution of time. So civil society will have 20 minutes, then the State of Suriname will have 20 minutes, and then the Commission will also have the same amount of time. And then back to civil society to listen to their final comments on our observations or questions, and they will have then 12 minutes. I'd like to point out the purpose of this hearing. Civil society, who has requested this hearing, will present an updated situation of the rights of indigenous and tribal people in Suriname. This includes their efforts to establish a legislative basis for their rights in the national legislation and the recent development in all sectors of mining, logging, and everything that is infringing or impeding them to exercise their tribal and indigenous rights. Without further ado, I will initiate this hearing, and the floor goes to the civil society organizations. And asking you to, when you speak, please say your name and the organization that you represent so that we can register these, we can take note of them. Thank you very much. You have the floor, civil society. Gracias.
I'm Senior Counsel for Indigenous Peoples' Rights International. My other part-time job for the last 30 years has been representing indigenous and tribal peoples in Suriname before the Commission and the Court. Unfortunately, I'm still here today doing exactly the same thing. When we were preparing for this hearing yesterday... Should I stop?
Un momentito que no tengo traducción. Gracias.
Let me start from the beginning. My name is Fergus Mackay. I'm Senior Counsel at Indigenous Peoples' Rights International. For the past 30 years, I've represented indigenous and tribal peoples in Suriname, first in the case of Moiwanah Village, then in the case of the Saramaka People versus Suriname, and finally in the case of the Kalina and Lakono Peoples versus Suriname. These three cases all started off with facts that you're going to hear again today because the same situations are repeating over and over and over again without any change. The first time I came to the Commission for a hearing on Suriname on these same issues was 1997. Today is 2024, 2023, as you know. It's been a long time. There have been three judgments of the Inter-American Court in that period as well, each of which found that Suriname has grossly violated the rights of indigenous and tribal peoples in that country, and that indigenous and tribal peoples are defenseless under domestic law. They have no rights in law, and they have no legal personality to seek enforcement for their rights before domestic tribunals. This situation persists today despite those three judgments of the Court. We acknowledge very much and commend the role of the Commission in processing those cases and arguing them before the Court. We greatly appreciate the Commission's role, and we're here today to again ask for the Commission's assistance in dealing with these issues. I'm cognizant that there's a line between what may be discussed at this hearing and the jurisdiction of the Court to monitor its judgments, and I want to be very careful not to cross that line, particularly as we've requested a hearing before the Court on compliance with those judgments as well. So any reference to specific aspects of those judgments is solely for background and context here, and I'm not asking the Commission to have another go at what the Court might do later on. Suriname's lack of compliance with these judgments goes beyond disregard for the orders of the Court. It extends to notorious and active violation of the letter and spirit of those judgments. I'll give you two examples here, and you'll hear others from my colleagues to the left who, despite the signs on our table, are traditional authorities of their communities. They're not civil society; they're part of indigenous and tribal peoples' governments in their communities. So the first example I'll give you is a series of mining concessions that have been issued in Saramaka Territory, one to a Canadian multinational that includes 33 Saramaka villages. The Court in 2018 found that that concession violated the terms of the judgment. Since that time, we've found another 20 mining concessions that have been issued in Saramaka Territory comprising over 100,000 hectares, and those were issued between 2009 and 2013. There may be more, but we've not been able to identify them. In 2012, one mining concession was issued in the Saramaka Village of Balling Sula. The miner started operations in the residential area of that village, prompting extensive demonstrations from the community members, who blocked the road and sought to stop the operation. The miner brought case in national court system against the State of Suriname for failing to protect his mining operation from the Saramaka. The judge upheld the rights of the miner and ordered the state to protect the miner from the Saramaka on whose land that miner was operating in direct contravention of the judgment of the Court. At no time were the rights of the Saramaka raised in any of the proceedings by the state or anyone else or the judge. This was in 2021. You'll hear later today that in May 2023, two indigenous persons were killed in the village of Pekinsaron as they demonstrated that they're against taking of their lands for a concession and their exclusion from those areas by the concessionaire, who told them they were not allowed to hunt, fish, or access the area. This prompted widespread demonstrations in the community and a police operation, which involved the death of two persons. Five others are now in jail, and they have been charged with terrorism in relation to their protesting the taking of their lands. So the situation now today in Suriname has escalated from one where the rights of indigenous and tribal peoples are simply disregarded to one where violent situations are erupting and people are being killed. Why is this happening? This is happening because the state has yet to enact a law that recognizes that indigenous and tribal peoples have any rights whatsoever to their traditional territories. If it had had, neither of those situations I just mentioned would ever have occurred, or they would have occurred in very different circumstances. Again, I want to stress that indigenous and tribal peoples are 25% of the Surinamese population. When the Commission adopted its merits report in the case of the Saramaka People in 2006, prior to sending that case to the Court, the Commission stated, and I quote, "One major manifestation of racial discrimination has been the failure of state authorities to recognize customary indigenous and tribal forms of land possession and use, and that the denial of legislative protection for their rights reflects unequal treatment in the law." The Commission said that in 2006. That situation persists today, and it is racial discrimination against one out of every four citizens of the Republic of Suriname. The United Nations describes this as structural and systemic discrimination. The Court and the Commission have both urged Suriname, in the case of the Court ordered Suriname, to adopt legislation to correct this situation, yet in 2023, that legislation still has not been enacted. We acknowledge that there is legislation pending before the legislature, and it has been there since 2021, yet every time it comes up for debate in Parliament, there's a last-minute amendment or some other reason that that debate is delayed, and it has yet to be enacted. The most recent reason for delay was a letter submitted by the Chamber of Commerce, which maintained that recognizing indigenous and tribal rights would discriminate against the rest of the population of the country. Instead of summarily rejecting that, as the Court did in its judgment in 2007, as the Commission did after an onsite visit to Suriname in 2013, the state indulges such excuses and yet again delays enactment of the law. The situation persists; it has not changed. The state has, however, enacted a law that allows for the conversion of leasehold titles granted to third parties into ownership titles, including within indigenous and tribal villages, including two of those that were party to the Kalina and Lakono Peoples' case decided by the Court in 2015. Those titles have now been converted to ownership rights within their villages, even though the law says this should not happen within indigenous and tribal territories. But those territories have yet to be defined. There's nothing in the law of Suriname that says where they are or what rights anyone has to those territories. I mentioned earlier, the first time I came here talking about this was in 1997. The situation not only is no better, it has got worse. While the state delays enacting the legislation that could recognize the rights of indigenous and tribal peoples, and indeed the legislation that's pending in part does so, even though it would do so incompletely, it would require enacting laws in order to complete that, the state has done nothing more than issue a plethora of resource extraction concessions in indigenous and tribal territories, again in direct contravention of the orders of the Court, and pass laws that allow third parties to convert leasehold rights in indigenous and tribal territories into ownership rights that are much harder to expropriate for the purposes of restitution as ordered by the Court in Kalina and Lakono Peoples. So we very much hope, one, that the Commission will forthrightly support the views of the petitioners when they are in the hearing before the Court when these matters arise. The Commission previously has found that Suriname's acts and omissions contravene the judgment of the Court in Saramaka People, and we hope that it would do so again forthrightly before the Court. In relation to those who are being accused of terrorism for demonstrating the expropriation and taking of their lands and denial of their subsistence rights, we hope that the Commission will write an Article 41 letter requesting information as to why they are being prosecuted for terrorism offenses when there is no reasonable relationship between those offenses and what happened in that situation. And we would hope that the Commission will very much question the state today as to what exactly are the obstacles to passage of the law that's been pending before the legislature for the past two years. Thank you. I yield to my colleagues, who again are traditional authorities and whose voices are much more important than mine. Thank you.
Thanks, Honorable Commissioners. My name is Samunda Yabini. I am from the... I'm youth from the Association of the Samaka Traditional Authorities. I am a third-generation Samaka human rights defender, and I stand here before you as on behalf of the chief to speak for the tribal communities in Suriname. I was not even born yet when the Samaka People started this fight for our... for the rights to their land. And my ancestors also fought and won their freedom from slavery over 250 years ago. My grandfather was the first generation that started this fight for our land rights. After that, my dad took over and stood before this Commission with a case that led to the Samaka judgment in 2007, and because of this case, he was also awarded a Goldman Prize in 2009. And now, in 2023, I have to stand here again to fight for the same rights. The draft land rights law in Suriname is still not adopted by the Parliament of Suriname. Instead of things getting better, it's only getting worse. The Surinamese government implemented a law not so a few weeks ago. They implemented a land conversion law, which went into effect on the 1st of November, and this means that everyone, other people can... they can get ownership within our living areas. So we still face a lot of threats. We still face a lot of violations, and this is only happening because the government didn't adopt the... doesn't comply with the Samaka judgment. Our drinking water sources are being contaminated with dangerous chemicals like mercury and cyanide because they are being used in mining concessions that are in our territory. And can you imagine if our drinking waters are contaminated, what will happen with the fish and the animals and the people that are eating those, because this is also part of our food sources? Another challenge that we face is deforestation, which has increased since the judgment in 2007. The women in our communities are still facing challenges with foreign invaders that are being... that are coming in our territory. Now we are facing one that is constructing a road through our pristine forest that was protected by our ancestors for centuries. Dear Commissioners, I am here to ask you, to ask the government of Suriname what the reason is why they can't comply with the judgment of the Court. I am 30 years old. I wouldn't want... I don't want my children to come... to have to come here again to fight for the same cause. Thank you.
Guten Morgen, Leute von der Interamerikanischen Kommission für die Rechte des Menschen. Ich bin Kapitän Silawin Alamjawari von dem Dorf Galibi in der Ostsee, ein von den Dorfen genannt in het Kalina und Lakonovonis. Es ist viel, das mich von der Tat muss. Alles hat zu tun mit dem Bedarf meiner Bevölkerung. Ich werde einige Gefallen geben, über die ich und meine Bevölkerung Sorgen machen. Kurz vorher hat die Surinamesische Regierung eine Grundkonferenz in Vorhinein gebracht mittels eines Staatsbeschlusses, und es wurde am 1. November 2023 in Werking getreten. Diese Gesetz geht völlig gegen unsere Rechte, um dass wir Gefahr aufnehmen, dass andere innerhalb unserer Wohn- und Lebensgebiete Eigentumsrechte bekommen. Die Inwerkungsdienst dieser Gesetz, beschlossen, ist gegen alles, was früher gesprochen war. Der Abspruch war, dass die Gesetzlichen Rechte erst behandelt werden und danach wird die Gesetzliche Grundkonferenz behandelt, die noch immer im Parlament ist. Jetzt ist es richtig, das Gegenteil passiert. Geachtet, Kommissionleute, wir werden nicht ernst genommen, und es wird auf uns gesehen. Die Surinamesische Regierung findet die Regeln unserer Grundrechte nicht wichtig. Könnt ihr als Kommission der Regierung fragen, warum diese Rechte noch nicht in der Gesetz sind abgenommen? Könnt ihr als Kommission der Regierung fragen, warum diese Rechte noch nicht in der Gesetzgebung sind? Mein Volk weiß, dass die Surinamesische Regierung sie nicht ernst nimmt. In folgenden Regierungen bleiben Ausgaben gemacht innerhalb unserer Wohn- und Lebensgebiete in der Form von Ausgaben für Huth, Landbau, Konsens an Bauern und Fremde. Und die städtischen Bewohner werden verboten, um ihren eigenen Gebiet zu arbeiten. Andere von außen kommen ihr eine Lesse vorlesen. Deswegen sind inzwischen Vertretende von der Stadt und den Dorflingen. In dieser Streit sind zwei der Streitkräfte verletzt. Diese Menschen sind ermordet, weil sie für ihre Rechte gekämpft haben. Wenn unsere Rechte geregelt waren, in einem Gesetz könnte niemand innerhalb unseres Gebiets Rechte entgehen. Was noch schmerzlicher ist, ist, dass diejenigen, die aufgekommen sind für ihre Rechte, auch noch sind eingeschlossen und beschuldigt von Terrorismus. Seht ihr, wie ernst es in Suriname geworden ist? Sie ermorden uns, wenn wir aufkommen für unsere Rechte. Verehrte Kommission, könnt ihr die Stadt hierfür um Verantwortung fragen?
Good afternoon, members of the Inter-American Commission on Human Rights. I am Captain Silowin of the village of Galibi, one of the villages mentioned in the Kalina and Lekono verdict. There's a lot that I need to get off my mind. All of this has to do with the interests of my community. I will point out several incidents that continue to worry me and my people. By state decree, the Surinamese government has recently implemented the Land Conversion Law, which will be in effect as of November 1st, 2023. This law goes completely against our rights. We will be in danger because others will gain ownership rights within our living areas. The entry into force of this decree is contrary to everything that was previously agreed upon. The agreement was that the Land Rights Act would be handled first, and only afterward would the Land Conversion Act be handled, which technically lies still before the Parliament. Now, the exact opposite has taken place. Dear Commissioners, we are not taken seriously. We are looked down upon. Continue? Okay. The Surinamese government does not consider it important to arrange for our land rights. As a commission body, can you ask the government why our rights have not yet been included in law? My community knows well that the Surinamese government does not take them seriously. Successive governments continue to grant logging and mining concessions to city dwellers and foreigners within our territory, with the result that local residents are banned from cultivating their own areas. Can you imagine that you have your own house, but you have no say or control in your own house? Instead, others come from outside and lecture you on what to do. That is why in May of this year, the young people of the village of Peking Saron revolted in protest, leading to a standoff between villagers and representatives of the state. In this struggle, two of the protesters died. These people were murdered because they fought for their rights. If our rights had been regulated by law, no one from outside would be able to derive rights within our area. What is even more painful is that those who stood up for their rights have been detained and accused of terrorism. Do you see how dire the situation has become in Suriname? They murder us when we stand up for our rights. Dear Commission, can you keep the state of Suriname responsible for this?
Let us have you speak later. The 20 minutes is up. So, at the next round, when you have the floor, you can then continue. So, I would like to now give the floor to the representatives of the state.
Good afternoon, Madame Commissioner and all at the table. I'm offering our greetings from Suriname. And allow me to present to you the delegation of the Republic of Suriname attending today's hearing. A hearing that was, is requested by the civil society here, represented by members of the FITS, VSG, Campos and IPRI. My delegate comprises of three persons. My name is Roy Binat Pandey, Agent of State. At my right hand, we have Mrs. Marco Waterfall, the Deputy Agent of State, and at my left-hand side, we do have Mrs. Analise Achoense, in the position of Secretary to the Office of the Agent of State. Madam Commissioner, yesterday we have submitted to your, to your office our written report, including several annexes. Today, I will provide you with a summary of that report. Everything contained in that report is deemed to have been repeated here today verbatim. On June 15th, 2022, I formally commenced my mandate as Agent of State. The methodology that is followed by my office has been to seek for all parties involved the most appropriate, uh, the most appropriate approach to settle matters regarding alleged human rights violations. It is therefore that the state wishes to refer to the domestic remedies at the disposal of all who seek recourse in matters of contention. In line with Article 46 of the American Convention on Human Rights and Article 31 of the Rules of Procedure of the Inter-American Convention, the state encourages that the remedies, and I quote, "The remedies under domestic law are pursued and exhausted in accordance with generally recognized principle of international law." End quotation. The state is convinced that on the national plane, the Surinamese judiciary is independent, competent and objective and impartial in its hearing of cases of all litigants, and therefore encourages that interventions be sought within the national sphere first. In compliance with the pronouncements issued by the Inter-American Court on Human Rights concerning collective rights of the indigenous and tribal people and with regards to logging and mining concessions, as well as the infrastructure projects affecting indigenous and tribal people territories inter alia. And I will mention two paragraphs. First, the operative paragraph 15 of the Saramaka People versus Suriname case, and I quote, "The Court shall monitor full compliance with this judgment in exercise of its attributes and in compliance with its obligation under the American Convention, and shall, and shall close this case once the state has complied full, fully with its terms." And secondly, the operative paragraph 21 of the Kalina and Lekono People versus Suriname case, and I quote, "The Court will monitor full compliance with the judgment in execution of its authority and in compliance with its obligations under the American Convention on Human Rights, and will consider this case concluded when the state has complied fully with its provisions." End quotation. The state is bound to and will report to the Inter-American Court on Human Rights concerning the progress and challenges faced with implementing the above-mentioned judgments and as they relate to the collective rights of indigenous and tribal people and on the logging and mining concessions affecting the respective residential and living territories of the indigenous and tribal people. Considering the aforementioned and the importance of, and the importance the state attaches to the full enjoyment of human rights by all under its jurisdictions and respecting the international and regional commitments in this regard, the state is keen on informing the Inter-American Commission on Human Rights of its following proposed issue as it has been presented by the civil society. And we have listed five points, beginning with recent attacks against indigenous villagers. Second, threats to use military force against a Saramaka community opposing unwanted gold mining in their villages. Three, unexplained flooding of villages related to discharges from the Avabaka Dam. Four, the rampant and unregulated discharge of mercury and cyanide by miners operating in and around indigenous and tribal people lands and water across the country. And five, information concerning Suriname's participation in the Caribbean Reparation Commission without any attempt to seek indigenous and tribal people views. These five points, Madam Commissioner, we have extracted from the documentation we have received from your commission as it was provided by the civil community. And we will respond as follows. With regard to the second, the first issue, named recent attacks against indigenous villagers, our response is as follows. With regard to this subject, the state observes that although no specific case was mentioned in the production as it was communicated with your office, it received as announcement and notification of this hearing. The state would like to take this opportunity to inform the commission of the progress made by the respective authorities in the investigation concerning the Peking Saron incident of May 2nd, 2023. This incident is currently still under investigation, and recently, the Magistrate Court closed its part of the investigation and submitted its findings to the Office of the Attorney General. Your esteemed commission will be informed of the outcome of the full investigation and the conclusion decision when it is made available by the respective authorities. The second issue relates to threats to issue military force against a Saramaka community opposing unwanted gold mining in their village. We respond as followed, Madam Commissioner. The state is not aware of a formal report or otherwise of a threat related to the use of military force against any Saramaka or other community with regard to unwanted gold mining in their village. The provided issue information is not specific, nor gives it us any linkling to respond to this matter. Additional and specific information is needed from the petitioners regarding this subject, such as the name of the relevant community and the place and the date of any incident they are referring to. The third point is with regards to the unexplained flooding of villages related to discharges from the Avabaka Water Dam. The hydroelectric works is located in the district of Bracopondo. The power dam was designed on the premise of being able to generate about 160 megawatts average hydropower to feed the Suralco Paranam Aluminum Smelter and Aluminum Refinery, whose operation goes back to the 60s. The Paranam operations was closed a couple of years ago, but still hydropower is generated. Spilling of water, Madam Commissioner, from the dam basin occurs when rarely due, very rarely due to abnormal rains. And with regards to the abnormality of rainfall, we would like to give you in general some insight. In general, Suriname does have four weather seasons. First, what is called the large dry season from mid-August to end-November. Second season is called the small rainy season from December to the end of January. The third season is called the small dry season from February to mid-May. And the fourth season is called the large rainy season from mid-May to mid-August. Due to climate change, Suriname is also experiencing the negative effects of this. In our written report, we have given a full explanation to you how water is accumulated in the hydropower reservoir and how the water levels are maintained and what critical circumstances can lead to the decision to spill water. The first spilling, Madam Commissioner, of water goes back in the year 1990. And the second event for water spilling was in the year 2022. So you can see, 1990 till the year 2022, there is no event that gives reasons for spilling of water. In 2022, the intensive spill operation commenced on the 12th of April, April 2022, and lasted until mid-June 2022. Each spill operation with minimum, moderate or intensive is announced, and I ask your attention for this paragraph. It is announced in advance to downstream communities. The communication protocol developed by the company Suralco in the 60s and adopted by the state oil power company, Suriname, is that the district commissioner is informed of on the upcoming spill event. It is the duty of the district commissioner to send his field personnel into the various villages to inform the communities. This procedure was also opted in the 2022 event of water spill. We would like to inform your esteemed commissioner that according to Suriname geographical infrastructure, the district commissioner is a government representative who, among other duties, actively communicates with his or her local community. This also was the case with regard to this event. Moreover, we can say that SPSC also made use of the good offices of the district commissioner. The water spill causes flooding on areas in the natural flood plains of the Suriname River. Houses and belongings of residents in the villages were seriously affected. The impact on a macro level was that all agricultural plots, recreational facilities and homes situated in the natural flood plains of the Suriname River were flooded. On a micro level, several houses that were built in the river flood plains On a micro level, several houses that were built in the river flood plains were flooded. The government responded to the flooding that resulted from the intensive spill operation through the National Coordination Center for Disaster Management called NCCR. The NCCR is the country's agency dealing with all kinds of operations to respond to incidents that affect people's life. The NCCR is also one of the members of the Caribbean Disaster Emergency Management Agency called SEDEMA. In mitigating the flooding effects, the NCCR provided the following to the affected communities, and I will name you four initiatives and we gave a full and brief detail. We have described it in details in the report we have submitted to your office, Madam Commissioner. The four initiatives were temporary relocation of affected households, food packages for affected households, installation of drinking water tanks in the villages, supply of drinking water to the villages. The NCCR also worked in close collaboration with the primary healthcare, Suriname, and focused on the full package of services, including a lot of work that was executed, of which also a listing of almost 10 to 12 issues is fully described in the report we have submitted to your office, Madam Commissioner. It is worth mentioning that the Suriname Power Company made a budget of US dollar 700,000 available for aid to the affected communities, of which US dollar 600,000 was spent in the year 2022 on the following. We have put a list and a very extensive list of what has been undertaken to use this fund and to provide aid to the affected people in the mentioned area. That amounted to a total of 600,000 US dollars. The remaining budget of 100,000 US dollars was made available for the Presidential Working Group with regards to development in the area of Bracopondo. I will give you some more detail on this work of the Presidential Working Group. In 2022, flooding of parts of the villages downstream of the Avabaca Dam gave rise to fierce public debates. The question was posed whether the company exploring the dam has acted as a prudent operator towards and during the intensive spill operation. Subsequently, the Suriname Energy Authority initiated a technical review on the said SPSC spills. The independent consultant by the name of Wally N. Haria Limited, named Wally from Brazil, was contracted to perform such a review. The Wally report concluded that the operational procedure carried out by the company of Baca was very acceptable, especially the decision by the company, as I have mentioned, to commence spill operations well before the operational maximum level of the reservoir was reached, demonstrated, and I quote, prudent practice by SPSC. If this was not done, a catastrophic incident, namely a water dam break, could occur, resulting in national catastrophe. For this reason, an immediate and prudent decision was taken, which due to the time-sensitive nature, prohibited the execution of a community-inclusive approach. The state had to consider its responsibility in the widest context possible and was therefore left with no other options but to have a regular, a greater general safety and interest, including that of the local community. The state spared no efforts in assisting the affected communities, as illustrated earlier. The Wally report is also attached in our documents forwarded to your office, esteemed Commissioner. Also, reports that has been generated validating the report of Wally has been submitted. I may say on this topic that learning from the lessons as this has been experienced gives reasons to the company to sit together with the local community and the government representative to set up a plan, what is called a hydro power purchase agreement, in order to see for objectives, in order to allocate funds from the hydro power sales and to collect by this means proceeds that can create a fund for, if it will be necessary, to moderate to large compensation of affected households. I will leave it there because in our submission, we have provided you a detailed report on this issue. The fourth theme is with regard to the rampant and unregulated discharge of mercury and cyanide by miners operating in and around.
I'm sorry, your time is up. So perhaps the next time you intervene in the second round, you can speak to this. And also because we need to be strict about the time so that everyone has a chance to speak, I beg your pardon and I beg your understanding. We're now going to move on to the next part of our hearing. We're going to allow the commission to speak, and I'd like to give the floor to Carlos Bernard.
Give me the opportunity to talk in this hearing, and I would like to thank you to extend my gratitude to the petitioners for coming to Washington DC and presenting this information and your views concerning this very complex problem, and also to the honorable representative of the state for being willing to engage in this dialogue. Let me start my remarks by saying that this hearing is not a space in which we are here to find responsibility, international liability of the state or to declare that. In addition, there have been a couple of judgments by the Inter-American Court in which this has been acknowledged, but just to trigger or catalyze transformation, I think the purpose of this hearing is to achieve some kind of compromise between the parties and some agreements and to trigger or catalyze a conversation that leads to transformation. And in this spirit and taking into account the good faith of the petitioners and also of the state that is here, when in many hearings we don't have the state, they are not willing even to hear. Here we have a wonderful delegation from the state ready to engage in the conversation. I would like to make some points, just as a point to begin the discussion that I hope can continue in Suriname, can continue in Suriname. So to the petitioners, I would like to make some remarks to the petitioners and then to some remarks to the states. The first remark to the petitioners is that, of course, this is a very deep historical and structural problem, and even concerning the implementation and compliance to remedies is going to be hard. Why is that? Because situations like these are not very easy to redress, and also they are even more difficult to redress in a framework in which we have a democratic constitutional government in which there is the rule of law and separation of powers. For instance, even if the government is here willing to say, right now, I take seriously this judgment and from tomorrow, I do this and this, many of those changes, they need to go through parliament, and all of us know that congressional procedures take time, they require deliberation, et cetera. That's my first remark. Then the second point is that the problematic is so deep because it implies a collision between rights and interests, of course, and this is going to be my next point to the states, to the state, taking seriously and respecting the rights first of the rights to the territory of the Samaka people is paramount. Second, the right to life and the health of the members of that community is paramount. Third, the right to prior consultation concerning projects in their territories is paramount. But also the state has an interest that has to respect, like for instance, administrative acts that grant the titles before. They have to respect the legitimate expectation of companies that have made some plans, for instance, concerning infrastructure. It is my understanding that also Suriname is party to some bilateral investment treaties and some free trade agreements, and our trade panels can find Suriname international liable if they deprive those companies from the rights that are entrenched in those treaties. So the state is between two, between a rock and a hard place. Sometimes it is very difficult to find a middle way to navigate those interests. In addition, the state has to comply and to respect the right to environment. You were talking, for instance, the problem of deforestation, and that is linked right now to the problem of mitigating climate change. So the problem is how to comply with those judgments in the middle of that problem, of that deep problematic. Then my point to the state is we are aware of that, of that problem, but the respect of human rights of the petitioners should be a priority because they already have some, a couple of judgments by the Inter-American Court of Human Rights, so there must be diligence as much as possible to the state in getting legislation passed and also regulations to comply with those judgments. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I will now give the floor to the rapporteur of the Freedom of Expression.
To thank your presence here about civil society and the state. Very impressive, this intergenerational persistence of challenges, and I hope this commission and this scenario could be part of the solution as we've tried to be for so long. I have a couple of questions probably for the state, because there's also an angle of prevention during demonstrations, and I would like to ask you in the context of protests by indigenous people, indigenous groups, I would also like to inquire about actions taken by the state to prevent violence, safeguard people's safety, and maintain public order. I would also like to ask the state about the measures implemented to ensure that the use of force adheres to principles of exceptionality, necessity, progressiveness, and proportionality. This, I mean, as a general question, but also focused on the recent events of May that were raised during this hearing. And also, my second question is I would so kindly ask for both parties to comment on the progress of dialogues, if any, between indigenous associations and the state to fulfill this inter-American frame that has been discussed here. Thanks, Madam President, for the opportunity.
Thank you, the Executive Secretary, Daniel Rana. Thank you very much. I'd like to greatly thank the information that was sent from the delegation of the state of Suriname. We received this so that we'll be able to analyze it after we leave this hearing. I'd also like to greatly thank the communities that are here present in a generational fashion with experience, with firsthand knowledge of what is going on. I would like to comment to the state that what we are seeing in Suriname is not an exceptional or different situation, but one that is happening all over the region. But not because of it, not because it is everywhere, does it mean that it is less urgent to take care of it? I believe that there has been a question within this conversation that should be answered beyond the technical elements that fortunately the state has sent us, but the question that emerges is why has the sentence of the court not been complied with, and why is there such a difference between the expectation of the communities and what is happening at the state? We have been in conversations with other communities and the state where the Inter-American Commission then makes it safe available. So we'd like to know if the state would like for us to be available to have a conversation between these communities and the state so that you can reach an agreement of how to comply with that judgment and to comply with basic standards of water contamination or land conversion laws. And why are these rights not being respected? I think that beginning this conversation would be the first point, and if the state is willing and the civil society, we would like to do that. Thank you for your community that has come here because you're a third-generation defender of your rights, and you have already seen probably the deterioration around you and the loss of hope that this commission can create or foster this conversation. It is not our intention to decide what the state's responsibility is, but it is up to us and what we want to create a dialogue. Thank you, President. Thank you very much, Tania. I will make two points with the understanding that I fully share the offer that the executive secretary has proposed to the parties about this dialogue, and I reaffirm that. There are two points that were made by the petitioners. The first one has to do with the draft law, this bill. This is a bill that has been around for a while and was and was thought as a formula, as a response to ensure property titles of the territories, recognition of your rights, that will allow and facilitate the action of the state as they have been proposed by the state. And what we hear from what civil society has told us is that having a law, then this claim that the indigenous and tribal people have can become a reality, or they can get an answer. So the barriers or obstacles that exist, what are they so that this law has not been promulgated, has not been passed? And something else that civil society said that was important. I wrote down the date of this new guideline or, oh, okay, of the conversion of certain territories that are within the tribal territories. And when you become owner of the property, there are people that are not part of those communities, are not members of the tribal and indigenous communities that are obtaining these property titles in such a way that now there is no possibility of reverting this or changing it because they now have title under this new law. I don’t know if it’s a guideline or a special guideline or a law that allows these people to obtain property titles. And so, society is demanding or requesting that that bill of law be passed so that their rights can be enforced. So, those very specific points, of course, taking into consideration everything that the state has said regarding answers and actions that they have taken facing certain issues, in regard to certain issues. I would like to take the opportunity to acknowledge the petitioners that it is so nice to see this third empowered generation here claiming their rights of their ancestral history, where you acknowledge the need to continue in combating and taking all the necessary action within a peaceful manner and as a collective to defend your rights. But it’s also been great to hear the claims from those who really know what is going on and to listen to your live stories is very gratifying from the stance of the commission. So I’d like to express our commitment to help you find these bridges so that there is communication that will allow you to reach agreements and obtain responses. Whether the judgments of the Inter-American Court have been complied with or not is not something that we are going to decide here and say who is accountable when. But the commission, yes, can, along with the state, review key points that are mandates or recommendations. And we can participate in trying to find ways to support so that we can solve that problem. And I conclude my words by saying that we’d like to identify barriers, obstacles, and see if we can provide support and help to find understanding and other paths that lead to it. So I will now give civil society the last period of time for your opinions. Oh, but before I do this, I didn’t want to leave this for the conclusion, but I would like to welcome the presence of the commissioner who will become part of the commission, so now I will then give the floor to civil society. And then, I think we will allow the other person that was unable to speak before for final comments.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Gracias, Commissioner.
My sense of deja vu being here is even bigger now. That the state is suggesting that people need to exhaust domestic remedies? The commission, the court, six times have found there are no available and effective domestic remedies under the laws of Suriname. The people sitting here with me today would love to be able to exhaust domestic remedies. That’s why they want a law enacted in Suriname. They want their rights protected under the law of Suriname. So just like any other Surinamese citizen, they can go to court and enforce their rights when they’re not being respected. They don’t want to come here. I don’t want to come here. It’s cold, it’s expensive, et cetera, et cetera. They want to do this at home. That’s why they want a law done. And for the state to sit there and suggest that they should have somehow exhausted domestic remedies? I’m sorry, it beggars belief, it really does. If you read the judgments of the court, they went law by law in Suriname, explaining why they’re ineffective, why they’re unavailable. The biggest reason being indigenous and tribal peoples have no legal personality. They’re invisible under the law of Suriname. They have no standing to raise collective rights before the judiciary. You saw what happened when a minor took the government to court. The court ordered the state not to protect the Saramaka people, to protect the minor. If the state would like information on this, I suggest the newspaper has considerable amount of information, including four ministers who made public statements about it. No one’s asking you to determine liability here. That’s been done three times already. We very much hope the commission will forcefully make that point before the court, should the court grant the hearing. And we look forward to having this conversation with the court where it’s appropriate. That said, as was mentioned, the commission does have a mandate to monitor the general human rights situation in Suriname that is not connected to those judgments of the court. And we encourage it to do so, both in its final press release of this session, expressing deep, profound concern that these matters are still persisting unabated. Ten years after the orders of the court have expired in the judgment, the latest judgment. Ten years. Yes, some of these matters are complicated. They’re not that complicated. The other states of this hemisphere have figured out at least how to make a law about this stuff. Why is Suriname the exception? It’s not. Ten years ago, the orders of the court expired. Not the notification of the judgment. The deadlines imposed by the court expired ten years ago. But the state would like to talk about whether domestic remedies have been exhausted or not. I really don’t know what to say about that one. We would also very much encourage the commission to request information about these terrorism charges that are being brought against these people, unreasonably again, without any rational basis for imposing such charges, and to do so formally through an Article 41 letter. Thank you. I’ll stop there. I think that’s enough. Thank you.
You have eight more minutes if you’d like to make use of some more time.
We are looking at the chance that our children, also discrimination, will also find themselves in trouble. We want our children to fight. The fight makes many of us feel deep. Because our children and children are living in fear and pain. When our rights are recognized and the law is adopted, it will be calm and peaceful and well-veiled. Can we sleep better and not live in fear and doubt? People have become weak and tired. And we are aware because we have already sued the state internationally. The state is tried, but the state has not been punished. We are not protected. The commissioner helped us against this injustice that has been done to us. Can you ask the state why they don’t punish them? What is written on them? As our rights were adopted in the international law, the people who were accused of being punished will not have been punished.
I will translate. The state continues to stand in our areas. We constantly have to find out that more areas have been given out within our homes and habitats. The villages of Alfonstorp and Pierre Condre. These were the same villages that were mentioned in the Kalinya and Locomo judgments. People don’t listen to us anymore, they don’t respect us anymore. We were discriminated against. Discrimination is a form of human rights violation. I have children and grandchildren, and I have been fighting for me and my people for longer than they have been alive. Everyone wants to leave good things behind for their children. We run the risk that our children will also have to experience this form of discrimination. I don’t want my children to have to fight this struggle. This struggle wears us down and affects us deeply because our children and grandchildren are in danger of living in fear and pain. If our rights are recognized and the law is passed, we can sleep more peacefully and no longer have to live in fear. We are despondent and tired because we have already denounced the state internationally. The state has already been convicted, but the state is not taking any steps forward. We are not protected. Dear commission members, please help us reverse this injustice that we have suffered to this day. Can you please ask the state why they are not carrying out what they have been ordered to do? If our rights had been written into law and the judgment of the Inter-American Court had been properly implemented, these aforementioned incidents would not have occurred. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Were you going to say something? Yes? You have three minutes.
I greet you, honorable commissioner. My name is Captain Petrusy Stephen. I’m a Saramaka leader. In the first place, I want to thank you to take the opportunity to listen to us, to give us the opportunity to present our case again. I don’t have a lot to say, but I just want to acknowledge the fact that I took this young Saramaka lady with me to present you the same thing we came here a few years ago to present to you. And I want to ask you to ask the government of Suriname, the state of Suriname, to recognize our rights, to give us the right to manage our territory. So, for me, I’m grateful that you gave us this opportunity again. And we do hope that when we leave this room today, we don’t have to come here again because it’s now the time to take action. That was the chief FC. But my name is Yabini, and I really want to add some point. We have listened to the government, their contribution, and we are happy with the offer of the commissioner to talk, to sit on table, to discuss this issue. Because we don’t totally agree with what is presented here today. And we are interested in the report so that we can see regarding the flooding of the Brokopona area. We heard here $600,000 that was made available for the Brokopona people after the flooding. And when we went there, speak with our people, the only thing we had heard is that the state of the company offered some people, selected people from communities, 25,000 assadi. It's not even seven thousand, seven hundred dollar. And Brokopondo people, if this six hundred thousand dollar was given to the people, then I guess these people can got at least two thousand dollar per person, but that's not the case. So we are very confused with this number, and that one hundred thousand was reserved for the cabinet of the president. But we want to, we want to discuss this with them and to see how we can find a solution. Because we are not fighting against the state, we are fighting for our rights, that our rights get recognized. Thank you.
Gracias, gracias. Thank you, and I'd like to give the state the floor.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner, and all sitting at the head table, all the commissioners and the lady from the secretariat. Let me first make this point. Our report in writing and our oral report today, we have drafted and prepared it according to the document that has been filed with your office, Madam. And that was submitted to Suriname through the channel of the embassy, to the Minister of Foreign Affairs, coming finally on our table, and we have responded. Today, I may say that the council of the village people highlighted other areas also, of which we are not able to reflect on, based on the fact that these points the council has addressed today were not part of the document that has been filed with your office, Madam Commissioner. That's one observation. And in my presentation, I made a point that we should like to see more detailed information so that we can give further clarity on the position of the state in further settings. Let me secondly say that we are listening to you, Madam Commissioner, and, and Madam, and I do hope that I can pronounce the name correctly, Madam Pansy, has made the offer to see if there is a role, a fighter role for the Commission to facilitate the dialogue. And as representative for the government, we welcome that initiative. We would very happy see that, and I underscore the words of Mr. Yabini, we are not sitting across each other. We will sit together, and your intervention will help to have a sound area, a sound climate, I may say, for a fruitful dialogue in order to solve what is called a problem. But to say that, Madam Commissioner, in our full written document that has been provided to your office, we mentioned that at least in the last couple of months, the government has initiated two consultation mechanisms, two. One is called the consultation mechanism created with representative of the traditional authority of Brokopondo, including entrepreneurs, non-governmental organizations, all who are active working in the area of the district of Brokopondo. And all these are members of what is called the Presidential Working Group. This working group has been established to collect all the issues that need attention, and if these issues are also problem areas, to reach an agreement how to bring decisions in order to execute what is needed to solve these problems. That is one. Secondly, there is what is called a mechanism with, in which two representative organizations are included, and that is the Association of Indigenous Village Heads in Suriname, one. Second, the Maroon Foundation named Ah Maroon Compass. Both are sitting in also a presidential commission. And this is, this has been created in March third, 2023. So these mechanisms are to identify areas that are giving concern, that has to be addressed, and in which the government should take proper initiative to solve the problems. Madam Commissioner, let me say that after commencing this office in, what was it, in June 2022? In writing, we invite the organization, Fitz, the Indigenous Village Heads in Suriname, the association, I may say, and we ask them to come together with us in order to sit together, not only to present ourselves, but to listen, and in which way we can sit together, communicate, and make a listing of first things to do. And we had that meeting in the month of November, the third week of November 2022. And we agree that we will have further meetings. Although we asked for further meetings, these meetings were, we haven't got positive response to continue. So I'm not putting this issue forward as that there is no willingness, I don't know what is the reason, but let me say that we sincerely welcome your initiative for a dialogue. And we will do everything what is needed at our part to see how we can, with your initiative for that dialogue, to come to rounds of consultation with all my colleague, fellow members, people of Suriname, with their council, and I'm in agreement. We are now almost ten years ago. We should solve what are the decisions of the court. And all the interventions of your Commission, we will deem it very necessary to go along it and to make good steps in solving all the problems. Thank you, Madam Commissioner.
Muchisimas gracias. Thank you very much. With that, we conclude this hearing. I think one positive result of this hearing is the openness of the different parties to participate in a dialogue. We really appreciate that openness, and I know that the Executive Secretariat will be reaching out to the focal points of each party so that we can move forward with that. And we will be following up. And I am speaking both to the state as well as to the petitioners who requested this hearing. We would like to be able to help the state to comply with the judgments issued, and for the petitioners, we would like to help you to be able to consolidate your rights through normative instruments, laws, et cetera, so that you can assert your rights. I know that this hasn't started yet, but I hope that this might be a starting point for a potential dialogue, and this hearing is adjourned. Thank you.